It's like high, like high school math.
Hopefully everyone then. But hopefully everyone signs. I usually crack at the.
All right, let's call to order the March twenty fifth Lidditz Borough Council meeting. Uh, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask Reverend Tim Kane from Rossville ECC to give us the invocation this evening.
This one? All right. Thank you. Let's pray. Holy Father, we come to you this evening to seek your blessing over our meeting. In our reports and updates, encourage those who labor on our behalf. Let their work be seen clearly, understood, and appreciated. In our discussions, give us wisdom and its good fruits. Make us patient, peaceable, reasonable, quick to listen, slow to anger. In our expenses and proposals, please provide for our community so that we can live well together. Grant us industry and vision to work with our hands and carry the responsibilities you have entrusted to us. Allow all of this, reports, discussions, proposals, labors, to be met with your gracious favor. We chiefly come to ask your blessing. Bless us. Amen.
Please rise for the, uh, pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just like to disclose that council had an executive session at six thirty this evening to discuss some personnel matters. Right, the, um, first thing is the approval of the February twenty fifth meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February twenty fifth.
I'll second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. All right. Moving on to what I'm assuming most of the folks in the room are here for. Um, Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to you for the new officer swearing in.
This evening, I have the pleasure of, um, swearing in two new police officers to the Borough of Lidditz and, uh, ladies first. Joseph Giovente Venko. Okay, so if you would, raise your right hand. I, Allison Lern.
I, Allison Lern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
As a police officer for the Lidditz Borough.
As a police officer for the Lidditz Borough.
Police Department.
Police Department.
Will support.
Will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Lidditz.
And the Borough of Lidditz.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Joseph Gioventco.
I, Joseph Gioventco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
As a police officer.
That I, as a police officer.
For the Lidditz Borough Police.
For the Lidsborough Police.
Department, I'm sorry of that.
Police Department.
Will support, open, and not, and support.
Will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the Pennsylvania Constitution.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of the, of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Lidditz.
And the Borough of Lidditz.
And then I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Jared, did you have anything to add?
Yep. Simply just a welcome, and we're excited to have both of them with us. They both come to us with prior experience, so, uh, they're well qualified, well trained, they can start serving the residents and visitors of the borough very quickly. But most importantly, they both have close ties to the borough. They possess interpersonal skills that we're looking for, that we think are going to relate well to the community, so. Looking forward to having you both, and welcome.
Allison Joseph, welcome. Thank you very much for, uh, willing to serve the Lidditz Borough, and we're looking forward to you guys joining the amazing team we already have here. All right. Wait. Absolutely. Everybody. Rabbit ears in the tank.
Yeah.
Get a lot of them. Stand up here.
Thank you all for your service.
What's that? Yeah. Go ahead. We're gonna wait for half the room to exit now. You all could stay. There's a lot more interesting things to talk about. Water and Sewer is next. Exactly. All right, we can all fill in the front row now.
It looks like sure, they can all move.
All right, the rest of you are here to stay for the rest of the exciting stuff, right? All right, let's move on to the next item, the next presentation from the YWCA.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for sticking around. Um, my name is Maddie. I am the intake specialist at YWCA Lancaster's Sexual Assault Prevention and Counseling Center. Um, we are the county's designated rape crisis center, and April is sexual assault awareness month, so we are here prior to that month. Um, so we can tell you a little bit about our services and just make sure that everyone in the community is aware of what we do.
I am Jo. I am a counselor and educator with the YWCA Sexual Prevention and Counseling Center. So some of the services that we provide, um, we operate a twenty-four hour hotline that community members, um, victim survivors themselves can call for resources or support. We also offer a no-cost counseling and therapy services for all victim survivors of sexual abuse, harassment, and assault, as well as any significant others. That includes family members, um, significant partners, siblings, or anything like that. So anybody impacted by sexual abuse at no cost. We also have, we offer medical and legal advocacy. We can go with victim survivors to any of the, um, police stations if they're doing a report, as well as meet them at hospitals if they're getting any type of, uh, medical care after any type of sexual abuse. Um, we also offer primary prevention programs to, uh, businesses, schools, and all of that stuff at no cost. So that will include doing like bystander intervention, trainings, as well as talking about sexual assault and sexual assault one-on-one, how we can all as a community, um, obviously prevent sexual abuse and just get more information about it to support all of everybody that has been impacted by sexual abuse and such. So we just want to say thank you for, um, giving us the time to come today to, um, speak about our services and also to do a proclamation, um, talking about April being sexual assault awareness month. So thank you.
You both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Did any council members have any questions for the young ladies?
Thank you for what you do.
The only thing I want to say is I, I think it's unfortunate that our police officers left the room before you spoke.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I wish we'd been thinking a little bit more about that. Um, next year, we will try to, yeah, and I'd, and I'd like to ask Jared if he has anything to, to speak on this matter. Our, our chief. Acting chief.
Yeah, I would add, uh, you know, every agency within the county is aware of the program and, and has those, uh, communication systems built and the unfortunate need to, to reach out, so, um, this is very familiar to us. We appreciate what they do. There was relationships between the organizations already exist, so should the need arise, we know they're a good resource.
And it is unfortunate that.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, ladies.
And it is an unfortunate situation that we do have sexual assault within our community, but we do, as everybody does, so thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Hopefully you ladies will stay because we do have a resolution we're gonna go through here in a minute.
I will defer mine to anybody else in the audience who, I, I have mine from last year. Thank you. That would be great.
Yeah, put those right there by the sign-in sheets. Some folks can grab that on the way out if they'd like.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions from council?
All right, so.
Move on to, we have no ordinances. We're gonna move on to the first resolution.
Am I doing this one? Okay, I had it. Now do I go through this whole thing? Okay. All right. This is, uh, resolution number one zero zero two. It's a resolution recognizing April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and calling on the citizens of Lidditz to build a community where sexual abuse, harassment, and assault is not tolerated, where victim survivors are supported, where accountability is delivered, and where all people have an opportunity to thrive without fear of abuse or assault. The revolution, the resolution also recognizes the YWCA's Lancaster Sexual Assault Prevention and Counseling Centers as Lancaster County's Designated Rape Crisis Center, providing services to, to victims, victim survivors, and provising, provising, providing education and prevention services to address sexual violence across our region. Want me to make a motion with this?
I move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, ladies. All right, uh, moving on to the second resolution on the agenda. Arbor Day, Mary, do you like that?
Yeah, Arbor Day, um. I move that we adopt resolution number one zero zero two, a resolution to celebrate Arbor Day in the Borough of Lidditz. This is one of the requirements of becoming, um, certified as a tree city, um, which we have done since twenty seventeen here in the borough. We've just received last week, uh, verification that we met all of the qualifications in twenty twenty-four and look forward to doing that again in twenty twenty-five. Um, this is a very short one, so I'm just gonna read it. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, and honestly, the history goes pretty fast, so, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and is typically observed in Pennsylvania on the last Friday in April, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Lidditz that we hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the borough. We urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and natural environments. In recognition of this day, the borough encourages all residents and visitors of the borough to take part in a borough-wide cleanup with a focus on our street trees on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. That event is organized by Venture Lidditz, and you can learn more about that through Venture Lidditz. Um, so I move that we adopt the resolution as written, and I will reserve further comments until after a vote's taken.
I'll, I'll second it.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
I'd just like to, um, offer that, uh, there was a project that was done by some residents of the borough to label trees, identify trees in Liddit Springs Park. I want to recognize the park board at Liddit Springs Park for allowing residents to do that project, and the Boy Scouts that participated in the, um, hanging of the signs and creating of a map of the trees. They're native trees that have been identified down there. And I just want to encourage people who are thinking about planting a tree to, um, seriously consider planting a native tree for all of the benefits that they provide in our community in terms of habitat, um, and other ecosystem services. So go to the park, check out the, the park, the trees down there, and pick a good one for your yard. And there will be an event, uh, that the last thing I want to offer is that this group of volunteers will be organizing an event in the fall of twenty twenty-five, um, where you can go with an expert to walk around and learn more about those trees. So there will be more information about that, um, in the fall.
Thank you, Mary. Move on to the next resolution, Ken.
Hey, Steve, I have two agreements to share tonight.
Want to do those before this resolution?
I was so excited about the agreements, I was skipping ahead. So, uh, before, so we have resolution, uh, one thousand, uh, four, a resolution amending to chapter fifty-five, uh, Lidditz Borough Code fees. Um, so the, the brief background there is that, uh, the Council of Borough of Lidditz has enacted ordinance number C two twenty, which allows the Borough Council to establish a schedule of fees, charges, and expenses to be charged in connection with the administration thereof. And it lists, uh, labor and equipment and a number of items that, uh, the Public Works, uh, provide service for our community. So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, uh, number one thousand four, uh, that amends the chapter fifty-five Borough Lidditz Code fees.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Now the agreements, Ken.
Okay, now we have two agreements to, to share with the public tonight. The first one is, is, um, uh, some memorandum of understanding about some data collection for fluoride. Uh, this, uh, came across to us earlier this month, and, uh, it's outlines, uh, a partnership between the Pennsylvania Coalition of Oral Health and the Borough of Lidditz, and it establishes a framework for the collaboration to monitor and report water fluorization, fluorization levels for the centers, to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. So, um, it's basically a, a, a data collection agreement that we've been given here to discuss tonight. Uh, council, do we have any, uh, thoughts or concerns with this, uh, data collection?
Yes, um, I would like to, uh, make a motion to table this agreement until next month, until the committee, the Water and Sewer Committee, has had a chance to discuss the agreement in committee.
Okay, uh, let's table this till, till April. Thank you.
Agreement to table.
Elijah, Rob, are there, are there any deadline timeframe that we need to get to?
Uh, n- no, no, there's not.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, let's table it till next month.
Okay, um, the second agreement is, uh, number five seventy-three. It's, uh, an agreement that we have with the Columbia Borough Yard Waste. This is the grass clippings, the tree trimmings, the Christmas trees, the, the, the garden, uh, debris that we, uh, have collected on a, on a regular basis, and this is, uh, uh, something we renew each, uh, I think it's each year, right, Rob?
Or is it? It renews automatically each year unless the fee changes, and in this case, the fee is changing, but it's the first time since twenty twenty?
Right, the, the fee will be now forty dollars per ton, so that's, that is a change. So, um, that's the change, and, uh, this is just renewing our, our agreement with the Columbia Borough.
And this is like the big incinerator that you take all of this to and it just, no.
No, no, that's, that's coming up later. That's next.
Okay, oh, yes.
This is just for yard waste, uh, and they compost it, I believe.
Okay, okay.
And it is a requirement that municipalities such as ours have a strategy for leaves and yard waste, which is why we're contracted. The incinerators are where our garbage goes.
Okay. Um, what are, the, the fee that they're charging us is forty. What was the previous fee? Do we know?
Thirty.
Thirty.
It was thirty. Okay, thank you. I would move that we adopt the agreement with Columbia Borough for Yard Waste Management. Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, bear with me as I get myself organized. Believe that is all of the resolutions and agreements. Ken, you're on a roll, so why don't we just go right into the council members forum and jump right into that wastewater even so?
Yep.
You're to speak about.
We have three items of business tonight, and Doug is gonna join us. Uh, Doug, come on up, and, uh, let's talk about Infomark and what, what happened last month.
We'll start off with finance. Um, last month, we were twenty-two thousand one hundred and eight dollars over budget for the month and twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars over for the year. Uh, reason being is typically in the first quarter, we have a lot of, uh, expenses that we don't incur the rest of the, the rest of the year. Um, we have to run our, uh, our sludge dryer, uh, more frequently every other week, which, uh, is chemical costs and, uh, really high utility costs. Uh, basically because the sludge doesn't, um, doesn't digest as well on its own naturally in the winter months when it's colder. So we end up having more sludge that we have to process. Um, so I expect that, the utility costs and the chemical costs, uh, to take drastic decreases, uh, in the middle of the second quarter. So we should see those numbers improve quite a bit. Um, the flow at the, uh, wastewater plant was down eight percent from last month, uh, and at the water plant, it was, uh, up four percent, so not, no significant change there. A couple noteworthy events. Um, the, uh, annual chapter one-ten water reports, uh, were submitted to PADEP. Um, we conducted, uh, tours of the water and wastewater plants for students from Thaddeus Stevens and Reading Community College, uh, throughout the month. Uh, we also, uh, assisted in the, uh, stream cleanup. We had twelve employees and family members that, that assisted in that. We ended up getting quite a bit. Uh, two emergency call-outs, uh, last month. One was, uh, they were both at the wastewater plant, and one was for a power outage, uh, where a car hit a pole. And, uh, then we did have our influent screener alarm, which was just a matter of a reset. Moving on from that, capital projects, uh, twenty twenty-four remaining capital projects, um, for the wastewater plant, limit torque valve actuators are due in March. They have been ordered. Uh, the PS one wet well gate, which is the influent for the wastewater plant, um, is tentative, tentatively scheduled for April first, pending on the contractor. And then for, uh, the, the water treatment plant, we're still waiting for PPNL to schedule depowering the line that runs over the, uh, well three in order to get that installed. We're hoping that's soon. Uh, moving on to twenty twenty-five projects, um, two centrifuge motors, uh, are due in April. They're on order. PS one pump motor's on order. Uh, parts for the aeration diffuser sock replacement at the wastewater plant, uh, are on site. Uh, we just had, and then one of the other projects is our, uh, nitrogen return check valve, which is, uh, returns processed sludge from one end of the process to the other, to be recirculated and treated. Um, we did have those looked at today, and, uh, it does look like we are gonna be able to repair them and won't have to replace them. Uh, the filter rebuild is on, currently underway. Uh, we're waiting additional parts to complete that. Uh, and then at the water plant, um, the rebuilding of the high-service pump motor, uh, is being scheduled, as well as the plant flow meter replacements. And then lastly, um, I have three items that were budgeted for twenty twenty-five that we got updated quotes on, uh, and the updated quotes were, uh, slightly more than what was budgeted, and I would, I'm requesting approval for, uh, the LED light conversion inside the water plant. Uh, filter room three, the, uh, quote was, uh, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars more than what was budgeted. Chemical room was two hundred and seventy-four dollars, and the anion room was five hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is a total one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars over what was budgeted.
Thank, thank you, Doug. Um, and this is, uh, good progress here. Um, we, we see that as valuable work, uh, replacing and upgrading those lights in those three rooms, so I, I think we have the, the reserves to cover that cost. So I'd like to make a motion that, that we, um, approve the upgrade for LED lights in the chemical room for eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, and the anion room for two hundred and seventy-one, and then the, uh, filter room for five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
So Doug, uh, thank you for your report. I see several exciting things that you reported tonight. One is the visitors, uh, not only, um, from two different entities. So you've got some young people coming through. Is this an opportunity to maybe look at, um, recruitment, uh, for folks that might be replacing?
Absolutely.
Members of your team in the future? Uh, uh, it is great opportunities in engineering and, and waterworks and so forth, uh?
Absolutely. A lot of bright young minds. I actually hired, uh, someone from one of the tours when I worked at Penn Township, and he, uh, in a year, he made lead operator. So, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a good resource for, for quality personnel.
One of the questions I had, maybe you have something already in, in place. Is there an internship, internship program with Infomark that could be implemented for these young people?
We do have summer internships. Uh, we don't have any, uh, right now. We don't have anybody, uh, taking advantage of that, but, uh, we do make those available occasionally.
Uh, you gave us some great understanding of, of us being over budget, but do you see some opportunities and, uh, to recover some of those costs and be a balanced budget in, in the next few quarters as we, as we go through?
Yes, uh, we, we've changed up a little bit of how we're, uh, running the sludge dryer, which is one of the major expenses, especially with, uh, regard to chemicals and utilities. Um, we've, we've developed a strategy that, um, instead of running, last year, the dryer was run every, every week. Every Monday, they would start it up. We've developed a, a better strategy now as to where we're able to run it every other week. Major, uh, expense in the dryer is a startup, which can take five to eight hours, heat up the oil, things like that. Takes a lot of resources. Um, by running it, uh, every other week, we're, we should be cutting that startup cost in half. Um, we're also, uh, keeping a close eye on the, uh, the amount of chemicals we're dosing. Uh, we're doing some research on that, seeing if there's, there's better ways that we can, uh, dose the chemicals into the centrifuge to get thicker sludge. We are already adding, uh, an additional chemical in the wastewater plant to, uh, to help the digestion, and, uh, so far, it's been working out really well. We've been getting a lot more water out before we process the sludge. And, uh, that's been enabling us to now run the dryer every other week for an extra day rather than every week. And that's, that's, that should, in the long run, be saving quite a bit of money.
Sounds like a lot's going on.
Yes, always is.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you for your staff doing the water cleanup. That's, that's really commendable. On the budget, I would hope that we've monitored that every month to see how we're doing with savings, with the kind of things that you mentioned. I appreciate that. You mentioned a number of upgrades or repairs that you need to do, need to do in your equipment. It feels to me like, over the years, we've had to do a number of that, those things. Is our equipment getting old? And what's the future of, we don't need to talk long about this, but I appreciate your foresight in looking at things ahead of time to make sure that they, they're repaired or that they don't break down so we can get our sewer taken care of and our drinking water. But we just need to be cognizant of what's, what the future looks like for our aging equipment, both at the treatment center, waste treatment and the water treatment center.
Right now, we're working on a couple different assessments. We just had a command, a control assessment done for the electronics as far as to determine what their current age is, if they're aging out, if they're, if they're still viable, we can get replacement parts and things like that. We're also looking at having a, an equipment evaluation done, an audit at some point in the near future. But we, we're trying, we keep an eye on it. We, I mean, we do all the preventive maintenance on the machines. We've got a good idea of what's, you know, going to be in need of repair, things like that. We do have some equipment that's aging out. We have some that have been in need of repair for, for a few years, and we're finally getting some of that stuff taken care of. And, you know, we hope to just keep everything running. The smoother it runs, easier my job is. So we're on top of that. Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the February Infomark report for the water and wastewater treatment plants.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Ken?
Steve, we have another item of business. We would like to advertise the, the construction opportunity for manhole number six and seven. These bids will be advertised this month once we have a motion on that. But to give the audience some background, Rob, would you care to just talk about what the construction is going to do?
Sure. So just to refresh everyone's memory, manhole six and seven replacement was part of our application for the Lancaster County ARPA funds that we received about two years ago. So we were placing manhole six and seven. They're both brick manholes. We're going to replace them with concrete, updated manholes to help with I and I and really take care of that infrastructure out there. INTECH is handling it from start to finish, the bidding process, the managing of it, everything. And it's all, it's all funded through the Lancaster County ARPA.
Thank you, Rob. Any other questions?
Just to clarify, I and I being inflow and infiltration, I believe, like seepage into the sewer from the groundwater, which increases our flows to the wastewater treatment plant, which increases our costs. So this is actually a cost-saving
Right.
measure.
More efficiency, yep. Thank you, Mary. Okay, hearing no other questions, I move to approve for advertisement for reconstruction bids for the manhole number six and seven.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Mary, would you like to speak about MS4?
Yeah, so just one item of work that the municipal, the Stormwater Committee has done, and that is to work on a standard operating procedure for dealing with winter salting. So I just want to commend staff who worked on that and our contractors, and we should have something ready for the public for next fall/winter to try to get ahead of the issues that we saw this year with the excessive salting, which has a market impact on the health of our Littit's Run down here and, and other waterways further downstream. So I just want to commend staff and the team for working on that so quickly and getting us ready for next winter. Don't really want to think about right now, but yep, that's it.
Anything else, Ken?
That's it.
All right, moving on to streets and traffic.
Okay. First one is the 2025 paving bid acceptance. So the borough advertised for the 2025 paving projects, and the bids were received on March 18th for the current paving projects, which are going to include paving, curb replacement on Cardinal Lane, Bluebird, Robin, Maple, these are all parts of these streets, parts of East Orange, North Lane, South Cedar Street. So five bids were received for the project. The highest bid was $823,725.89. And the lowest bid was $698,985.35, which is from the Construction Masters Services. So all the unit prices appear to be consistent. This is from our engineer. And they had recommended that the low base price of $698,985.35 from the Construction Masters would be accepted. If we have any questions about that?
We had some conversation, I think it was the last council meeting, about having to replace some of the paving based on contractors' performance. Do we have any, any ideas what the, how this contractor rates in terms of their performance? And have we used them before?
Who did the, who did the work before, Rob?
Construction Masters did it, I believe, two years ago when we did six and seventh. I forget the other names of the roads. But yes, they have done work for us previously. They haven't broken any of our contract terms. So there's no legal reason for us not to accept, accept their bids.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not interested in the legal part. I'm interested in their ability to do a good job and what, what experience you've had with them.
Yeah, I think that's what you're saying. They did six and seventh.
They did six and seventh. Yeah, they haven't broken any contract terms or anything like that. They're bonded, met all the requirements.
All right.
Who was it that did? Back then?
Penzi.
Okay. That was one we had problems with in the past, Penzi. Well, Second Street. Come.
Anybody else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Construction Master Services for the 2025 paving projects.
I'll second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
I just have one follow-up question or comment, and that is coordination with UGI? And who, who's handling coordination with them to make sure they don't come back in and need to do emergency repairs or such? Are they being adequately informed that they need to get work done on our schedule?
So Public Works always reached out, always reaches out to UGI in advance and lets them know what we're going to pave that year. So we've done our part. Hopefully, they're good on theirs.
Okay, let's stay on top of that.
Good or bad, we've, we've had those communications in the past, and we still have the 12th hour.
Yep.
All right, the next one is to advertise for Front Street Meter Pits bid. Rob, would you care to comment a little bit on that?
Yeah, so this is an approved project funded out of the water, water fund. It's the meter pit, and the water main that goes around the bridge there at Front and Locust, I believe. This goes in coordination with the work Public Works is doing on Front Street for the rest of the main and some service lines there. Like I said, all approved in the budget. All you guys are doing tonight is just approving the advertising. Once again, INTECH will be handling this portion of it from bidding, managing, inspecting, everything.
Questions? All right, I'd like to make a motion to advertise for the Front Street Meter Pits.
I'll second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
All right, I've got three special events I want to run through. Got the Littit's Chocolate Walk coming up on Saturday, October 11th of 2025, running from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. Downtown Littit's, it's put on by the Kiwanis Club of Littit's. It's going to be around 30 locations in downtown Littit's that serve chocolate treats to ticket holders. And I did this last year, and I needed to bring a box because there were so many good treats. So it's a good thing to do. Also have the Littit's Outdoor Fine Art Show. It's going to be on July 26, 2025. It's going to be in Littit Springs Park, running from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's put on by the Littit's Art Association, and they expect about 3,000 to 5,000 attendance, in attendance. One more special event, the Littit's Lions Club Patriotic Parade for July 4th. It's going, a running time between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m., going to take place on Main Street to Oak and down on South Broad to Orange Street, over to the high school. Road closures, obviously, and between 2,000 to 3,000 people are expected to attend. If we have any questions about those three events?
I do have a question. I see that the parade needs parking meters bagged, but I presume that that is because there is, they need the street closed for that?
Correct.
The Littit's Outdoor Fine Art Show does not need meters bagged.
Right.
But the Littit's Chocolate Walk has asked that meters be bagged, and I don't understand why they would need meters to be bagged, and I would not support bagging meters.
And that was a good question, too. I was going to ask you, Jared, because that typically wasn't this, last year, if I recall.
Yes, I understand. They always ask, they pay extra for free parking. Have you decided to issue a parent?
Okay.
They pay $200 a day.
That's right. Yep.
So I, you're, hold that ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
So part of the transitionary duties is, I'm looking at a lot of the legacy systems and practices to see if they continue to meet the needs of the borough, if there's efficiencies, if it makes sense to continue doing things the way that we've always done it. Part of my concern, and what I expressed, was moving forward unless there is a need to restrict parking for an event like a parade where it becomes a safety issue, a matter of practicality, et cetera, is one thing. If we're simply doing it because it's a legacy practice, you know, the fee that we charge to permit, if you will, the sponsor to pay for free parking doesn't come close to the average daily income of the parking meters, plus their staff time to go and literally bag every single parking meter for the event and then unbag it after the event. So moving forward for those reasons, it was my position that it just doesn't make sense for a lot of reasons that we continue this practice. So with the Chocolate Walk in particular, or any other event from this point forward, I would not be in a position to support bagging the meters unless it was for a safety reason.
Thank you, Jared.
Yes, thank you.
So I would make a motion to approve those three events with the understanding that there will be no free parking
For the Chocolate Walk.
For the Chocolate Walk, and the meters will not be bagged for that event.
Correct. Second?
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Jared.
I've got three activity permits. First one is 14th Annual Simply Christmas Event. Can't even believe I'm saying Christmas. December 14th, 2025, going to be running from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's located at 201 Market Street, and it's, it is put on by the Littit's UMC. Expected about 500 people. Also have the Littit's Lion Easter Egg Hunt, which made me sad when I read that because I used to take my little guys there, and they're not really interested in hunting for eggs anymore. So that is on April 12th, 2025, running from 10:30 in the morning to 11:30 in the morning at Bonfield Elementary School. It's put on by the Littit's Lions Club. It's an Easter egg hunt for ages 12, sorry, for 1 to 12. And then the last activity permit is the 2025 Camp Bree in the park. It's put, it's a, is going to be held in the Littit Springs Park on April 4th through April 6th, running from 5:00 p.m. on the 4th of April through 11:00 a.m. on the 6th of April. This is put on by, looks like the Littit's Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and Scout Troop 142. So they get to clean up the park in the evening. The next day, they have activities, some campfires, and then some services in the morning. Anybody have any questions about those three activities? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three activity permits in the Littit's UMC, the, sorry, the Simply Christmas, the Egg Hunt, and the Camp Bree in the park.
Second?
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
And I've got two last, last issues. These are, these are both for handicap parking applications. I've got a, Jolynn Gaskell is looking for, she possesses a handicap parking place card, and she's looking for a space to be provided outside of her house on the street at, in Westfield Court. And I just had a couple of questions about that. It's, it's, you and I talked a little bit about it, Jared. Just, it's a cul-de-sac. There's no, there's really no issues, a little to no public demand for parking on that road. It's going to be outside of her residence. So the only people coming in the cul-de-sac, obviously, are the ones that live there. So she's asking for a sign to be placed outside as well as Henry Orson. He's looking for another one. This is on 77 Front Street, looking for a parking space out front of his, of his property. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
No.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve both of the handicap parking spaces for the two individuals.
Second?
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Okay, I think I'm done.
Excuse me, I'm wondering if, I know that we just approved some activity permits or the event permits. I forget which one they are.
Right.
Some in the parks. And I'm wondering if Mr. Moats, who is here, would want to speak to any changes that might be going on in the park in the future? Is, no?
I can.
I, I believe there's some work going on to try to restore your grounds.
Yeah, yes. There were some, the major events, some of the major events that we've had in the past, where 2026, we're moving them on to see if they can find other places to go. The smaller events, like you hear tonight, I mean, they really won't be affected. The, the park has taken a big toll, and everybody probably can see it because it's just, especially in the back, it's not even, there's no grass. There just isn't any. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just want to make sure that we're all aware that there's going to be that change and that there may be some, I don't know if you've spoken with the people that hold those events and what, what the fallout of that might be, if there's anything that we can do from council perspective and?
Yeah, pretty much everybody, I think, has been notified that, that it affects, okay? Obviously, the road closure kind of affects people, but people are getting used to it. I want to thank you, just while I'm up here, thank you for the Arbor Day thing. The, it just so happens, the two big trees right out in front of the park got taken down, and I thought we'd get a lot of complaints, but we didn't get hardly anything. But they were not specimen trees. They were just alcova, I think they call them.
Alcova.
Yeah. And so they were taken down because we were basically going to restore the whole front end of the park. It's all going to be repaved. We're going to be put up a new sign, and, and so the front end of the park is going to get a whole new, a whole new look. But just to add to that, five more trees are going in this year, which will all be specimen trees. So, you know, that will just continue.
Thank, thank you for all the service you all have provided to the community in providing that space, and I'm sure we'll be able to accommodate.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Hey, you said you were included, right?
I am.
All right, Ken, back to you on finance.
Thank you, Steve. We have two items of business this evening. First is the financial statements, council. You have those in front of you and what you'll notice is that the, the expenses for the general fund through March 25th are trending below budget. You'll also note that it's tax season coming up and our revenue portion will start to be what we had budgeted for as we get into the next few months of the year. Nothing else to really report there. Seeing no questions, I move to approve the financial report for March and pay all the invoices.
Second?
Good motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Thank you. Second thing is we are just going to recognize that Lititz Borough has received two generous donations in lieu of taxes and the first was from the Lititz Methodist Church and the second was from the Lititz Mennonite Church and we are very gracious or thankful for their generosity. Thank you. Final thing to report is the finance committee had their monthly meeting on March 21st. Four items to share with everybody. The DCED report will be filed March 31st, 2025, and also posted on the Lititz Borough website and also published in the, in the newspaper. The full 2024 financial statement should be available May 2025. And then the finance committee has been, continues to work on their annual goals. And so just to, just real brief, we continue to work on watching our metrics for finance to maintain a high Moody's rating. We are, now have all the capital scorecards from our departments, so we're working on funding sources and how we might fund next year's budget. The finance committee has begun to look at the water and sewer fund balance policy and make sure that's in line with Moody's and S&amp;P rating criteria, so that has begun. We also continue to work with our departments in a, in a positive way to investigate possibilities to reduce expenses without reducing service levels. And then finally, we are beginning to build information and data that will help educate council on debt and what our responsibilities are in the future. And so you'll be hearing more about that as we go through the year and helping everybody understand what our obligations are. And that's my report.
Ken, on that, that third goal, I'll call it the operational inefficiencies, I think it was the third one.
Yep.
Have we given any timelines or deadlines to folks that, hey, like we, ideally we know we're going to be, or we know we'll be, it'll be budget season?
Yeah, so Rob put out a nice memo at the end of January where all of our departments had, had the goals and challenges lined out and we have May, May 19th, I think, is the date that Jared and Andy and others will, will turn in some opportunities. We asked, the goal was for five money-saving opportunities per department. And then we'll have an opportunity to, to discuss and, and then be ready for budget season.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
All right, moving on to personnel and benefits. Jerry?
Yes, I have two items. First item is a Parks Committee nomination. Tonight, I'm delighted to nominate Bethany Leister as a member of the Lititz Parks Committee. Bethany is a Lititz Borough resident for over 25 years. She is currently employed as the bookkeeper at the Lititz Public Library. Her community involvement has included various coaching and booster club positions. She and her family have spent many hours enjoying the parks of Lititz. She's interested in learning more about the ins and outs of Borough Government and she has a passion to see our parks continue to be valued resource to our community. So I am nominating Bethany Leister to the Parks Committee effective April 1st, 2025, to complete the term of Genifer Lee, which is completed on December 31, and then for a three-year term to be completed on December 31, 2029.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bethany's here. Do you want to say anything or? Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm delighted with the response I've gotten to our effort to involve more people in committees. Right now I have five people who volunteered and I'm still looking for other assignments, so we might have to form some more committees. No, I'm not, I'm just kidding, Steve.
You don't need more committees. All right, can we, can we finish? I don't think we've finished the motion, did we?
Oh.
Going through. Motion and second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. Elijah will catch me if I don't finish the formalities.
Okay. Secondly, following up on our goal projects for the year, the Personnel Committee, Personnel and Benefit Committee has four goals. The one is to successfully onboard Jared Hahn, who is our Lititz Chief of Police. The second one is to review and update non-union Lititz Borough employee policies to assure consistency among Lititz Borough departments. Three, to identify opportunities for individuals to serve, to volunteer for Lititz Borough committees and commissions, just what I mentioned. And four, to support the staff to create, to create a state certified, certified committee that, once certified, will reduce the Borough's 2024 work compensation expenses by 5%. I'm just reporting that as part of our goals for the committee. That's, I don't think there's anything needed. It's just a matter of reporting. Our committee will follow that and report on occasionally how we're doing. The Finance Committee has goals, the Personnel Committee has goals, the Zoning Committee has goals, and we're looking for the Streets Committee to provide some as well. So we're moving forward with that, Steve.
Yeah, and I would ask, and I, I think I've stated this maybe back in January or February, all of you to continue to have the goals. As Ken did tonight, he gave an update on some of them. Just if you are going to give an update during the meeting, please just share with Elijah as he and I review the agenda each time. That way I, you know, I have six people updating in one night. So, but just if you have an update, I know Jerry, there was correspondence there, so if you're going to share. The status of those.
Fair enough. Well, I can please my reports, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Chris, I'm hoping you're still online there. Do you have anything on planning?
I'm here and yet I do not have anything to report.
Okay. Mary, zoning and code enforcement?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is I reached out to Lori McIntar for our zoning officer last week inquiring about the fire site on West Orange Street and the status of the cleanup of that. I walk past it quite, quite frequently and I noticed as I walked by yesterday that there is equipment outside the building now and it does appear that they are moving forward with the cleanup, demolition, and site clearance there, so that's a, a good thing. My understanding is that they have received a demolition permit and they have also received or finalized their insurance, which is one of the things that has probably contributed to the delay. And I want to just ask Mike Smith, is there anything that you can add to that? Does that sound accurate to you?
Yeah, there's not much I can really add, other than to say that we do typically see that the insurance payout is, is usually the holdup in these situations. The insurance company will come in. We typically, when we're done, we turn the property over to the insurance company and they pretty much lock the place down until they're done with their process, which is, as you can see, pretty lengthy. We're dealing with the same thing at another property currently in Warwick Township. So, yeah, it's, unfortunately, that's just where we're at these days.
Yeah, well, my, my hope is that they are now able to move forward and that can be addressed.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's typically what we see, that once, once that process starts, that means the insurance company is done with what they need to do and things will now proceed according as they should.
Great, thank you, Mike. And the other thing, just a.
Mary.
Oh, yeah.
Chief wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, chief, go ahead. Absolutely, thank you, because I'm sure that there are members of the community who also drive by or walk by and notice the condition and wonder what's happening.
So yesterday morning, there was a site visit between myself, the representative from Public Works, and the demo contractor. So demolition actually started today. It started at the back of the house. Contractor's going to move forward as the week progresses. So the biggest concern was the, the sidewalk closure, because there's a lot of school walkers that walk from Spur Street, that side of West Orange Street that need to get to Lititz Elementary. The concern was we didn't want them to, without notice, get up to that point, realize the sidewalk's closed, then be forced to either walk back to the next crosswalk at Spur Street or attempt to cross the West Orange Street mid-block. So we verified that the signage will be up, giving advanced notice at the next intersection west of Spur Street that the sidewalk's closed with an encouragement to cross at that crosswalk. I've also been in communication with Dr. Sobron from the school district. The school district is aware of these impacts. They've communicated it to the school families with what the suggested plan to avoid that side of the street is and then also to ensure that the no parking is set up appropriately so the demo contractor can get the work done without any interruption. So as far as the Borough Departments, the police, public works, we're on the same page. The school district's on board and the demo should be done by Friday. The whole house should be down. Afterwards, because the, the front of the house is immediately at the sidewalk, the contractor will put up security fencing, which will exclude people from getting onto the property because there will be a big hole where the basement is, at least until part of the house gets instructed.
They already submitted, you might know this from your conversations, Lori. Do they already have the building permitted for the new and submission of the architecturals and everything they're planning to rebuild?
I, I haven't seen that. With a single house and a single lot, it doesn't have the full Form B code that we would with the land development. But I've asked that question just because I'm curious and as of yet, we haven't seen anything.
Yeah, because obviously I would, that was my first reaction, are they going to build something that's 50 foot back and, you know, staying consistent with Form B code, but as you said, we can't, if they're not going through a land development or a plan there, but they still have to submit something with their building permit application.
Correct, and I know that they are adding an addition to the house from what was there previously. So there is probably going to be a stormwater plan with that. There are provisions for not having massive setbacks. My understanding is going to be very close to where it was. I don't know if it's actually going to be on the sidewalk, but it's not going to, you don't have enough space to be back 50 feet.
Right, I was obviously exaggerating 50, but just something that would change the, the streetscape. Okay.
Thank you. So my only other note and your note about giving updates on goals is noted, but I do want to say that we have accomplished one of our goals in zoning and code enforcement, which was to update the fee associated with the rental inspection and thank you to finance for doing that for us.
You're welcome.
And that's it on zoning.
Okay. Ken, building any grounds?
Hey, thank you, Steve. I don't have any on my, anything on my list tonight. Elijah, do you have anything on yours?
So I can just dip into my report. The one thing I would say is that the skate park is, the phase three is either done or will be done very soon. We were actually thinking about having the Parks Committee meeting there for March. The contractor did not think it would be in the state that he wanted it to be in for the Parks Committee to see that. So we're actually planning the April Parks Committee meeting to be on site there.
Hey, thank you. That's my report.
All right. Mary, regional plan?
Yes, a quick report on that. The Borough's Implementation Committee met last week, two weeks ago, and began prioritizing the actions, basically working towards creating an implementation plan from the Regional Comprehensive Plan, began working on prioritizing the actions that we want to tackle first. We are planning to meet one more time before we gather with the rest of the Implementation Committee from the other municipalities. So should have more to report on that at the next meeting. The other thing I want to just call attention to is that the Planning Commission is continuing to pursue draft text amendment and map amendment for zoning to, to bring the zoning into compliance or into alignment with the comprehensive plan. And they tasked Elijah with developing draft text amendment for discussion at the next meeting, which is next Tuesday night. So if people are interested in what we are doing to try to make our zoning ordinance more, I guess to, to allow for more housing flexibility within the community, if they're interested in what's happening with some of the vacant lots or what might happen with some of the vacant lots that are in the, in the community, good idea to come out to the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday night and hear more about the details of that.
Is that April 1st? Yes. That's time, 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
And we do not do a virtual meeting for that. Planning Commission doesn't, you have to be in person for that one.
And the reason that's important is the Regional Comp Plan has identified housing as one of the major priorities. So what we're doing here in Lititz is taking, taking that serious and trying to find out how we can address that with our current couple vacant lots and looking at rezoning those accordingly.
Right, yeah, and it's, there's been really good discussion. I just want to commend the Planning Commission members for the work that they're doing because they're really being very thoughtful about this and found themselves getting wrapped around the axle and going to a little too far, I think, at the last meeting, but kind of came back to the real task at hand and I think we're on a good path forward there. So thank you to the Planning Commission for being so thoughtful about this and how it affects the future of our community.
Anything else, Mary?
That's it. Unless anybody has questions.
That concludes the council members forum. For Borough Engineer, Scott?
I'll have a copy of my report. It was fairly concise this month. We did address the paving, which the thunder was kind of taken away with that one already. But, and then we did review a couple of projects, a subdivision project on Raspberry Lane and then Weiss is planning to add some gas pumps at their facility, so we're, we're looking at that to see what, see what that plan looks like.
Finally use my points somewhere.
So, so those were the main, the main items that we had going on this month. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me this evening?
I'll be curious. I remember they, they went, a couple of them planned over the years. Obviously, they'll take up a bit of parking. Curious.
Sure, if you look at the building, the parking lot is sort of tucked in behind the, the bank and car wash on the, on the left-hand side or the south side is where that is being proposed.
I just remember, yeah, I think they were way over on their parking.
Yeah, you can tell, any day you drive by, you can tell it's not.
Yeah, I just mean to require them by order.
Yes, yeah.
And Steve, they actually went before Planning Committee, or excuse me, zoning hearing board for that and zoning reduced it below the amount of what they were even requesting.
Okay. Like a lot of, as everyone knows, a lot of those ordinances from the 70s were a little outdated with their parking requirements.
Good, yep. Thanks.
Any questions? Anybody else have questions for Scott? All right, thanks, Scott. All right, Mayor, we'll start with you. Anything?
I have no report.
Jared? You've been up there several times already. All right. Anybody questions for Jared or Mayor? All right, moving on, Managing Directors, Elijah, start with you.
Okay, update on runabout line. We actually met with Norfolk Southern's legal team along with our state consultant via Zoom last week. They'll be working on a contract amendment, but I'm not sure on the timing of that since this is, the attorney's in Atlanta. So, but they have all of our, all of our requirements from the state for this, so hopefully we'll have something good. I'm hoping for next month, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that. I did meet with the other municipal managers that have the rail trail. This is kind of reviving the rail trail group. There wasn't a whole lot to discuss, just basically, you know, administration and management. The one thing that they expressed issues with are e-bikes and the difficulty to, difficulty to enforce. There is required, there are rules that e-bikes, anything with a motor is prohibited underneath a certain wattage, but no one's out checking these and they're not confirming that people, if you have a mobility issue, you can use whatever kind of machine. So there's not the enforcement to it. They're getting resident feedback, so when we have the trail, something to look forward to.
On that note, just pause on that a minute. I've often wondered that from a police perspective, I mean, with the regulations, I mean, those things can move along. I've often wondered that from a police perspective, I mean, with the regulations, I mean, those things can move along pretty well. Right? Elijah?
Okay, I've reviewed the Comcast franchise agreement, because ours is actually up in September. There are other ones that are up in December. Some municipal managers are looking at trying to get everyone on board on the same timing in the county. The only difference between ours and much of the county is that we actually have two cable franchises here. So I wanted to make sure that there wasn't major differences. Ours is a little bit more generous than theirs, but ours was also adopted before theirs. So we discussed that with, coincidentally with the other managers at, with the trail, all have the same Comcast agreement. We're sort of want to wait and see about that and figured it's Warwick, Efforta, Efforta Township, and I believe Akron. So we're communicating with that about possible updates more to come. The last thing I wanted to mention is a follow-up on the voting ward analysis. Mary asked me to speak with this. As previously noted, there are voting registration disparities, particularly between Ward 1 and 3. Staff has been working on a methodology, which I shared with all of you, as a way to estimate population. So instead of looking at just the voter rolls, we looked at the average population from the households for the census. We actually reached out to the major apartment complexes and polled them on their numbers of tenants. And we reached out to retirement communities. As a result, we got within about 170 people of the most recent census estimate. So in general, it seems to be pretty close. Again, it's an estimate, we're not going to go out and count everyone. So we have a methodology that if council decides to redraw wards, that we could estimate those populations, make sure that they are compact and relatively equal. But just to review everything, council can modify the boundaries of wards. They can redraw the wards between 2 and 13. The only issue with that is Board of Elections has said we're not going to have any more than six polling places. So I would say six is probably the most wards that we could have. You can divide an existing ward in two, or as the Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs pointed out, you can dissolve all wards and go to seven at-large members. They said that a lot of municipalities do that. A lot of other municipalities feel concerns because it takes away some of the representative nature. Any questions on any of that?
I mean, in that instance, you could truly, if you just dissolved all the wards, six people that live in your neighbors, your, six of your neighbors in your street could basically do that and take over for the whole ward.
Exactly.
Right, okay, I don't think that would be very.
And that's, that's the concern that some have. But if you look, Warwick Township is the same way. They have at-large members for their board.
And they're a little bit more spread out.
They are.
Right.
In a borough.
Right.
Then, so yeah, you're right, one whole neighborhood.
Could be the whole Board Council.
You have different organized communities, whether it's senior living communities or such, you could have them all there.
Right, yeah.
So ultimately, this is council's prerogative and it would have to be done by ordinance. So if there is a desire to look at modifying them or redrawing them, that would need to be a directive from council.
So I'd like to request that we establish an ad hoc committee to work with staff on this issue and be prepared to move forward with it within some reasonable timeframe. That would be one of the things that the committee might establish, would be the timeframe for establishing the, the changes, clarifying the process and, you know, doing any research that might be necessary in conversation with, with staff.
Yeah, I think the committee would need to look at, you know, the timing of when you could do something like this. If you think about when the primaries and.
Absolutely.
It would have to be something being placed before it could even go through something of that nature.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I, I would, I agree, having a group work together to map it out. Obviously, Elijah and others have done some background research for it, but I agree, Mary, there, there's a couple of you who want to kind of take that and take a look at it.
I'd, I'd be happy to serve.
Yeah, I can certainly do that as well.
So I have a question, though. I know a couple of people have raised this, and I was just reading the, the code requirements. It says the code requires that wards be composed of compact and continuous territory as nearly equal in the population as practical, as officially and finally reported in the latest official census. So are we assuming that our wards do not meet that code requirement?
You can do that basically by the voting. If you, if you look at the numbers on the voting has been recently, I think that's what brought the topic up sometime in the past 12 months.
Right, and then we looked at it from a population. We tried to come up with the methodology. The methodology supports the same conclusion. As I shared last month, the issue with our wards and the census tracts are they're literally perpendicular to each other. If you look at the two major census tracts, they are divided basically along Broad Street. So you have a west and an east, whereas ours are strips going from west to east. So there's not a real easy way to use the census tracts to do that.
Because if you think about it, probably, again, I have no idea the history of the last time it was put together, but I'm pretty sure Butterfly Acres probably wasn't there, Warwick Woodlands definitely wasn't there. So that ward has grown probably quite a bit. If I recall, just from the voting, I think Mary and I's ward is the smallest in the population, but yet we're the densest downtown, which is kind of unique. But it's probably been, that's the reasoning, there was probably no development north and south back when these lines were drawn.
So I'd be willing to serve in that committee as well, because it does affect the ward I'm in. And I would have some, some thoughts about that.
All right, so, yeah.
Can we have?
You can't have more than three. You could have three, Steve couldn't be involved then.
Let's, let's have those, we can have some more discussions if there's a debate on Ann raising of who wants to be part of it. But let's, let's formulate a discussion there. Forgot three people that want to be part of it. I was gonna keep it between Mary and Nia, but have some more discussion on who's going to have. We'll definitely have a committee, though. Because in reality, it'll, it'll affect every ward.
Yeah, that would be one from each ward then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that was still on Elijah's report. So, Rob?
Yeah, just two things to point out in my report. First of all, the Certified Safety Committee, our last member's getting trained on March 27th. So we'll have our first official meeting in the month of April. And for the website migration, I had a conference call with Civic Plus, walked me through all the ins and outs. It's in your report there, but basically, there's no cost to the migration. We should do it because the, what we're currently using will go off the grid, basically, for lack of a better term, in November. And we can use this new package for a year, maybe a year and a half, to see if it's actually any, any better, worse, or in between what we, what we currently have. So more to come on that. Elijah, Kristen and I still need to sit through an actual demo behind the house stuff, but that certainly looks like the avenue we're going in for the short term. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Any questions for Rob? All right, thank you both. I believe that is everything. Agenda item nine, anybody public comments on any items that have not been discussed this evening? Right? No one, any online, Rob?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number 10.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Thank you for coming out tonight, everybody.